On April the 13th, uh, we had, uh, several kids show up for the, uh, volunteer day to help put down the moths and stuff for the park, uh, playground equipment, the new playground equipment. So, we're just gonna give them a little award here because out of the 28,000 people that lives in Pickens County or so, uh, these are the only ones that showed up as far as to help. So, I thought we'd give them a little old volunteer award.
As far as kids?
Yeah, as far as kids. Uh, so anyway, we, uh, appreciate their help.
Watch out, you got one behind you.
Alright, so, uh, Braylon?
Tell her what it's for.
It's for volunteering.
Tell Braylon, she doesn't know.
Oh, yeah, it's for volunteering, for helping with the park. Uh, Madison?
Ray, look at me and smile. Put your hand out.
Also, very quaint. Also give y'all a free, free win.
Well, back up there so I can take it down. Well, listen, go over there so you get your picture made with him, okay?
Go stand and get your picture made, we'll talk about it. Put your, take the part out of your mouth.
Give him on a good smile if you want. Okay, yeah. Give him on a good smile.
Where I've usually seen that language is, you've got a development that creates streets that look like they might be public. The point of this is to warn residents that they're not. Because sometimes people think that they are, because it looks like a road, because it's built even to, close to specifications. Um, that's where I've seen that.
Well, see, the only reason, the only reason I-
Otherwise, I mean, anybody receiving and, or using an easement, just an easement to access their property usually knows it because it's in their deed or-
Well, that was the main thing, because once I, once I sort of mentioned to, uh, Matt Chastain, I think, uh, and they said they'd never seen it. And so, that's why I came up with something, just to put it in the language that, you know, anybody that, uh, that, you know, buys property off an easement, you know, has to understand that, you know, that, uh, you know, the town will never maintain that road. Uh, and stuff, for the easement, uh, ordinance was on the limit, how many times you could divide that up, how many pieces you could actually have on a private drive.
The, um, we use something similar to this for metal lands, because they were gonna be private roads.
Yeah.
But also because of some statements that were made on some of the issues we just had, with some property being divided, I think it would be a good thing.
Yeah, sure, you can do it.
I mean, because I, 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 because I know one statement was made, "Well, if we do an easement, why can't we turn it into a, to a road later?" And I'm like, mm, no, that's not gonna happen. But I guess it, it's just lets everybody knows that is, buys that property down the road, that this is an easement and only an easement, and it will never be turned into a private road.
Right.
So, was you able to find out anything as far as any other county using?
Well, like I said, I've seen, oh, yeah, I mean, I've definitely seen, I have not seen it used just for easements. I have seen it used for, for what's called private streets.
Okay.
Um, which look like public streets, often. Uh, because I, I mean, a lot of developers want to do private streets, because they don't necessarily have to build them to the specifications, and that's where usually the city or the county wants to say, "Alright, but everybody understands, it's not ours, we're not maintaining it, your homeowners association is maintaining it."
But, as far as this, but, I guess why, I guess I need to clarify what I'm talking about. As far as the ordinance, as far as easements, as far as the boundaries of an easement, you know, how many people can be connected to that easement?
Right.
You know, uh, how many times you can divide that property in that, like driveway?
Well, we might wanna look at something more, you know, you had looked at the Cherokee County.
And I, and I couldn't find it, I don't know if they updated or whatever, I couldn't find it. I'll, I'll go back and try to look at it too.
Well, I mean, they've got a lot of good regulations that relate to things like that, and, and that we don't have those yet, you know, in terms of that definition of, because what they used to have would be people creating easements, and then it would turn, it would be used as a roadway, and then you just end up with a big mess, because the people that bought it don't understand, they didn't do it the right way. So, they, Cherokee County, they started restricting it. You can't really develop, uh, any subdivision, any division of land divided into separate parcels that way anymore. Or you can only do it if, you know, you have this number of width, et cetera. So, that's worth looking at.
And that's something we'd like to look at, because talking to the county, uh, they don't have an ordinance on, on the book, but, uh, pretty much they said the same thing, that, you know, you have a, uh, I guess it's called a legacy, um-
Legacy law.
Okay, so where, uh, you know, the family goes in and, and the mom, or dad, or grandparents, or whatever divides that up among the family. And then when mom and dad die, or some child dies, and that's where it comes to problems. Or, or they've had iss- issues before, uh, where somebody came in and they'll make them take out, uh, if they had another lot divided, and they wanted another lot, uh, cut off, and make them dissolve that first one before they give it to the state.
Right.
Uh, so, talking to Rodney out there, you know, just trying to figure out what they had over the books.
Well, if you wanted to look at, I mean, adopting, we had talked about, you know, do you adopt this kinda set of regulations? Because we don't have anything that comprehensive, and I, I mean, we just wanna do that.
I think we need to, because, you know, the September county is trying to sell off of several places that-
Because you know what's coming, so maybe adopt the whole, you know, I mean, as much of the whole thing as would apply to the city. Because it's pretty good, and I know they've worked hard on that.
Okay, so, could you, could you take that, or, uh, and email it to all the council members, and that way they can look at it between now and, you know, next month, you know?
Yeah, and we can talk about, is there anything you don't want?
Well, well, like I said, we can just let everybody look at it, because I don't think everybody's seen it.
Yep.
And that way we can, uh, discuss it and then have a conversation.
Okay.
How about?
I'll do that.
And I, I have seen it, Jeff, in doing title work, where it may be an old family, like Randy said, it could be a family that had 20 acres, and there's five or six homes built in there, and there's one roadway in. Well, nothing's put on those deeds, and then, and even if it is, a lot of times people won't pick up on it. And then all of a sudden, you've got this person that has bought into this, and they didn't realize, because maybe it wasn't shown correctly on, on a flat or something, they didn't realize it was just an easement, they thought they were getting a private road. Or they didn't realize that they were responsible for helping maintain that road.
Right, right, right.
And that's e- even with an easement. I mean, because sometimes they don't realize that they're responsible for helping maintain the easement.
Yeah.
I've, I've seen that kill a few deals.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Okay, alright, uh, so, um, but anyway, the next item would be an easement for Chris Bennett. And that's why I was gonna keep him, but I don't get his deed, uh, just to, you know, for the process, but we'll talk about that later. The next item would be discussion on beer and wine ordinance, you know, including microbreweries or wineries or vineyards. Um, is there, is there a standard state ordinance that, that the state, that we could just follow the state's guidelines on that?
No, you end up, well, not really. I mean, your alcohol, which I don't think we have an alcohol-
No, we don't, and that's what, that's what we're trying to work for.
Right, I mean, so, I would say, what are the kinds of things we want to potentially allow? And then, we could, you know, craft or use an ordinance that allows those things. What kind of things do you wanna contemplate letting happen? And then we just see what, what, because for each thing, the requirements are different. Different for wineries, different for liquor by the drink, different for liquor stores, different for beer and wine. Um, so I think you'd say, here's what we want to consider, and then we do whatever's necessary to talk about allowing those things, and we adopt an alcohol ordinance that regulates those things. Fortunately, you know, for lots of cities, and have gone through all those, so we can borrow, um-
I think it definitely needs to be something where there is a ratio between food and alcohol. I don't want just a, per se, bar.
No, no, we're not.
You know, and, and I know that's not what you're going for, but I'm just saying, I'm just explaining to Jeff, that's something that I personally don't want to see.
It has standards.
I, I don't, I don't have a problem with someone having a restaurant and, and, or, you know, like some of the wineries that we have now, they're doing wine tastings with cheese, you know, that kinda thing. Or a microbrewery, I, I really don't have a, a problem with a microbrewery if somebody wanted, but, you know.
Okay.
And, and I think as far as, as far as, uh, a microbrewery or a winery selling their own product, I don't think we have a problem with that, but I, but I, I mean, as far as by the bottle, and I don't really think that we want a liquor store or-
No.
Or, or-
So, no, 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 just liquor sales?
No packy stores.
No packy stores.
Would you want restaurants to be able to serve beer, wine, and liquor?
Yes.
In a restaurant?
I would think so, but-
Or limited to beer and wine?
How is that beer and wine?
Uh, I think they, a lot of your restaurants will come for liquor, or let liquor, because Longhorns, that's one reason they pass that. I mean, I know we're not going to Longhorns, but, but that's one reason they pass that.
Well, I know, I just-
You know?
Um, and I think, I mean, there, and I think you end up with a difference possibly of the vote. Um, you may be able to do beer and wine with a restaurant without, you know, going to the voters. Uh, to do the liquor by the drink, you may then have to take it from the voters.
Well, and I think you do too, and that's why I said discussing on letting voters vote on liquor.
So, that's a decision to make.
Because that way, that way, this year is election year, so if we can get it on this ballot, it was, it doesn't cost us. As long as we do it in an election year, and that was the only reason I was saying, that if we've done that, then the voters speak, whether or not that we could do that.
Sure, no, that's all, really, yeah, when it comes to liquor, usually all you are doing is saying, "We'll let the voters decide."
Then that way, they decide whether they want that or not.
Okay.
Uh, but you're saying that the beer and wine, that we can, and microbrewery and stuff like that, that our ordinance, or our charter says we can do?
I believe so.
Okay, alright. So, I would like to start, uh, doing that, like I say, no package, but, you know, if somebody, you know, actually made the wine or the beer-
Right, right.
They would be able to sell again.
What, what does the county have? The, uh, Pickens County, doesn't, they have liquor stores? Are there packaged stores in the county?
They don't have liquor stores in the, in the county.
No packaged stores, but they-
Well, I mean, they do have beer and wine, but I don't think they have liquor.
A liquor store?
Trout.
Trout!
No, 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 that's in the city limits.
No, not, not down at, uh, what's he gonna call it, that's the city limits?
Yeah, that's still city limits.
Okay, the city limits goes from all the way down there, so my understanding is there's no, no liquor sales inside the county. Now, inside the city limits, they are-
Does the county allow?
In the, in the, in the Pickens County unincorporated.
Right, right, that's what I'm asking, because sometimes what you're determined is determined by the county at large to, as your kinda baseline. Do they, you know, if the county allows liquor by the drink?
Yes.
In restaurants?
Yes, I think they vote on that, I believe they do, yes.
Yeah, because I think they do up at the community, I think.
I bet they do.
Okay, that's in the county.
By now, the city of Jasper, you know, does liquor by the-
But they do have that percentage of food.
Yeah.
Well, everybody just pretty much follows the state's order.
Yeah, it seems to be rare to have just straight up-
Now, now, I know that the city of Jasper just, uh, done some ordinances on microbreweries and stuff, uh-
Yeah, everybody's kinda getting into that now.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, a good thing there.
Okay.
Uh, so, um-
So, do you want, um, how would you want to proceed upon that? Have the, when, when your next meeting kinda decides what you want to-
Well, uh-
Well, I think that this meeting, we're gonna have to vote on whether or not we want to put that vote to the people, in order for it to be put on the ballot.
Well, that's correct, as far as, for the liquor, but, uh, as far as, uh, if we could do the microbrewery, wine, and stuff like that, we'd like to go ahead and start working on our ordinance and having a place, because, because there is a lot of work there, uh, of, you know, they gotta, I mean, we gotta have somebody that can, can do a background check and get all of the-
All the licensing and all the-
Yes, licensing, so, so, so basically, all we're trying to do is-
Because that's, I guess that's what the clerk will do.
Uh, yeah.
Well, now, the background check, all you gotta do is go to the city of Jasper, pay like $5, and they'll do it.
No, it's different, it's different on liquor licenses.
Well, you have to have a permitting process.
Yes, and you have to go, you, you have to go through the, uh, D I C I, it's basically a background check from the Georgia Bureau. But like I say, you have to do, uh, several things different. But anyway, we'd like to have a place just in case somebody found it, maybe nobody will ever find it, we not have to do with this, you know? That way at least, we can say, yes, we have it on the books, now we can, you know, uh, what, you know, start the process.
You want us to go ahead and work on an alcohol ordinance?
Yes.
I think that's good. The other, the other two won't come vote you out.
No, I talked to James, I talked to James-
They're like, they're okay with the concept?
Yeah, and I, and I actually mentioned them, because we did have somebody who was interested in doing a winery, and a, well, actually, a winery, a vineyard, but it wasn't the right lane, the right lane. And then, who's that? Remember, I, I seen a, I asked everybody, remember where it is? Yeah, see, because we did have a wine and cheese house that was interested in marketing beer as a place, so. So, I just asked everybody if they would be considering that, because, you know, that's one thing to ask, you know? So, that's why I say, I mean, if somebody bought a store, that might be a solid point, they could do that, you know?
And, um, would you be okay with, I guess, the beer and wine signals from a grocery or convenience store?
Um, no, not really, I, I don't-
I don't think so.
I, I think, I think we need to-
I think it needs to be either the microbrewery, the winery, or a restaurant.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to let it go that.
Okay. Alright, just can work on-
And my hesitation is the same thing that Henry just said, I was hit by a drunk driver, so I have, I have reservations.
Uh, something a little bit different, and I know we didn't put it over there, but, what about, and I know things are illegal and stuff as far as different types of things, but is there any counties or cities trying to stop stores or how?
Yeah, Forsyth County.
What they do.
Yeah, Forsyth County, they can, there cannot be any more stores open, smoke shops open. They just recently did that, I saw it on the news. Wasn't it, was it coming, or was it Forsyth?
I don't remember.
But it was somebody in there.
There's like one on every corner.
Yeah, but, but they, they passed something, it was after a kid, I can't remember, it, it hadn't been that long ago, but I saw it on the news, that they had put a ban on any more smoke shops.
But now, we have to, now, we have to be careful about the language, because we don't wanna say, say if a cigar shop wanted to come in, is that considered, you know, I mean, what is the regulation as far as a smoke shop or a cigar shop, you know?
Well, usually you regulate it by zoning, you regulate it by where it can be, and restrict where it can be. Uh, and I guess you could make something like that, maybe a conditional use, I don't know how, gotta be careful, you can't go too strong.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't really prohibit something that is otherwise legal. So, you usually have to allow something that is otherwise legal.
And they may have just did that so that they could get a handle on what they needed to change.
It's something to think about, because you do see them popping up everywhere.
Right. Um, I'd rather already have something on the books than-
I'll look at it and see what, how it would deal with it right now, and if we need to-
Yeah.
Alright, and, and I guess we just need to find out the language, uh, if we're going to put, before the ballot, as far as the liquor sales, you know, by the, by the, uh-
Do you, do you feel like the council would want to send that to the voters to vote if it's required, about the liquor by the drink?
I, I just think whether, I think, I don't have a problem with the beer and wine, but I think if we're gonna do anything in reference to liquor, by the drink, whatever, I would be more comfortable with that going to the voters. I don't want that to be something that, even if we, even if the council can, I don't feel comfortable doing that. I would rather that the voters have a say on that.
Okay.
Because it's their neighborhood, I mean, it's my key back, right?
Alright, the other thing is park fees, uh, and I just wanna discuss a little bit here. Uh, and this is just discussing, so y'all think about it, you know, and stuff, because, you know, majority of the, of the maintenance budget is spent on this park, a lot of the money is spent on this park and stuff. And, you know, we, we said that we wouldn't charge residents, but, you know, the last couple of works, other than Andrew, uh, and I think Martha's son came down and walked in, but there's nobody really in the community that's came down and, and followed it.
No, but we did that because of them paying, paying taxes.
Well, they don't pay in their taxes.
I know. Is that why the citizens should have to offer? Parks and Recreation, yes, but that doesn't mean that we can't charge them for it.
Right.
We just have to make it available.
Right.
Um-
I mean, well, like I said, we've, we've kinda figured out some way to offset some of this, because I'm gonna tell you, if you're not down here-
Do we have that many of the citizens that are getting it for free?
Not, I mean, not really, but, I mean, you know, as we grow, you know, as the other people come in and stuff.
That's true.
You know, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to have somebody down here more often, especially with summer, through, you know, because, uh, you can look over here and just see, uh, uh, somebody, I don't know if y'all have rope pedals, uh, I mean, they're, they're actually made out of silk or something.
I know.
You know, I mean, we're having more and more stuff, you know, if you're not here.
And we're getting more and more people on the railroad. Ooh, a lot of people, that stuff, they're all over the place.
You know, and, and, and somebody's already scratched the playground from a couple places.
I know.
And I've already seen people just, you know, so, so we've got to think about how to offset some of the costs, or, or how to figure out some way to, you know, uh, better handle on the park. Uh, because at least you're down here 24/7, it's not gonna be hard to, it's hard to, uh, keep up with it. So, that's just something to think about, um, you know, but this park, especially since a new playground was being in, you know, a lot of people, and it just seems like it's, it's worse than it is.
They need cameras.
Well, now, we do have some.
We have some, but we need the others put up too.
Well, but, I mean, that's, you know, that's harder than playing there, so, anyway. So, the last item that I'd like to just mention to y'all, uh, uh, there's a piece of property, and, uh, that is in town, that is for sale, and, and we met Lamar, and we met with a gentleman, his name is Lee, can't pronounce his last name, but, anyway. Uh, he is wanting to put a upscale, uh, generator in town, not, not downtown, but, you know, on some of the property that's up on 136. Um, the property, and like I say, I don't understand all about guns, and, and like I said, we'll ask him more places than has it kept alive, but, he's in the valley, and he says that's noise suppressing, you know, that it helps with the noise, uh, and it's something that nobody could just go in and shoot. He, he takes clients, and, I mean, he's willing to teach, you know, kids from around here, adults from around here, or whatever, but, but you just can't go up there and shoot any time you want to. I mean, it's gonna be locked, you've got to be, have an instructor or somebody to go up there. Uh, he says that he's in contact with, uh, people that, uh, movie stars, actors, that have some frame, uh, to have a shoot, you know, have a stand and stuff. He does that, he wants to give to the community, uh, and everything, I talked to Lamar, I asked him, because he lives so close to the Rangers Bay. I asked him how he voted on it, and he said, "Well, as long as you can set some hours," you know, he didn't wanna get up in, on a sunny morning, and there'd be the irate out there going, "Oh," and he wants to, you know, to stop, you know, have a decent hour at night, you know, before, you know, because he just don't want anybody to do it, uh, so-
Did you ask him what it would do to the property values in this surrounding property?
Well, it's like, uh, it's December 2nd to 1st, I mean, not, they've got one over on, uh, 14th, not this gentleman, but there's one on 14th. Yeah, Garle Mountain, so, uh, so they've got one in Cherokee County that they do a lot more than 120.
Yes, I actually have a restaurant there too.
But, but now, he's not gonna do that here, I mean, as far as-
Yeah, they got sued, the county got sued.
This would be similar to what the sheriff has, up on 136, up on Newport.
The neighbors about the noise.
Well, now, this would be one thing that, that we would have to, you know, because I think, I don't know how the zoning, I don't even think we gotta govern any of those zones. So, this is one thing that we would have to, have both hearings and, and everything to, to do. But the main thing, I talked to James about it, says he wasn't gonna be here, I thought we had enough people, he thought it was a great idea, just about listening, but we do need a lot more information.
We need a lot more research.
And, uh, so, but, uh-
And it's on 136?
Yeah, it's actually, it's in the park.
So, it's right up here?
Yeah. So, like I say, that's just something that he wanted to mention, uh, of that, and that's all I have. Uh, other than, well, I mean, the, the renovations of the building is going along, uh, we're doing some, uh, uh, some, some more upgrades that I talked, because the lady, she's gonna be sending out there to close that package, stating that we can use the money elsewhere, but there's, you know, like I say, I'm bringing the building up to code, but like I say, I still should have a lot of money available.
That's because, do you want me to work on the park ground?
Uh, yes, but we have to have, we have to fix these dollars.
I know.
Yeah, because, I mean, that could hurt, but-
Oh, now that we've got computers and everything back again.
Oh, we do have a new computer running, and, uh, and we had to buy a new router, uh, that one we, uh, bought, probably not, I mean-
I said it's so awful, sir, no, no, this is the new one, this is the new router.
Yeah, I mean, it's fried somewhere.
Remember the one that I, I will say, maybe October and November?
So, what is the back, what is the backup system, what is it called? What's the, the-
UPS.
UPS, okay, so we do have that on, on the computer and stuff, so, so, so the power surges or something, there's, you know, so, uh, on that. Uh, but as you'll see, the, uh, long is down for the, the equipment, uh, the playground's coming upstairs, uh, the road work is done. Like I say, I'm just doing, uh, the root races of the building, uh, we're gonna go ahead and put the side and step on the outside building, because that's stuff we're working and stuff, so, so we're just going-
Well, it's time.
It's time, so, so I am using the money to, to break it up to tow and to fix it up, so, that way, I don't wanna ever have to, you know, if I miss it again, I quit.
[laughing]
But the water-
Well, Jeff, you have to, how many times have we done this round?
I mean, every time, yeah.
I mean, every time we've done, you have to fix, we start all over.
Yeah, the water, the water issue, but we probably got it, we probably got it, so, so, anyway. Like I say, at the next meeting, the, the, the building should be done, and then we can have meetings there. We've got a guy that's actually donating his time to build us a council, uh, type.
Oh, okay. And so you'll be in a new place, awesome. So, are we, are we, but we're keeping our, our tables, right?
We're gonna keep one of them, the bathroom right off. Because we don't have no place to put, because like I say, we're, we're, like I say, this is gonna be U-shaped, it's gonna be real nice, uh, countertops on it, so, like I say, we're doing that for it. I mean, we gotta buy a countertop, but other than that, that's everything, that's good. Part of it's gonna buy a TV, so we can actually throw up stuff on the screen, agenda, or any pictures or this thing, so we can-
But for what, what are you putting in back in the kitchen?
Cabinet.
Well, I know that.
Why?
What kind of cabinets? I'm thinking of, if you're not- I'm thinking of, if you're not, if we're not gonna use those tables in that room, then they need to be in the kitchen for people whenever they're having these big dinners and stuff. It gives them plenty of room to set out their food, and people can go around. That was, that was my thought.
Now, it's gonna have a bar. A server, I mean, a server bar. Before they put food in there.
I know, it's not gonna be.
Yes, it is, I promise you. So anyway, anything else?
Now, can I just not park it near those tables?
Okay. I'll do that.